All right. Calling the Tuesday, May ninth Town Council meeting to order, 7:30. We actually, it is really 7:30? So we'll begin with a legislative.
Political allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Councillor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Oh, I'm here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Cortez.
Here.
Councillor Fay.
Present.
Councillor McGinnis.
Present.
Councillor Poland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Here.
Councillor Winograd.
Here.
Councillors of the Danways.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Before we go to proclamations, we do have a proclamation. I just, I, you know, I, to say that I'm sick to my stomach about saying anything about gun violence is just beyond. So, you know, I personally, and I'm sure you all are feeling anger, heartbreak, frustration, exhaustion, fear, shame, and disgust, and despair that we can't address our country's chronic disease of gun violence, largest cause of death of our nation's children. I can't imagine if there was another disease that we wouldn't try to fix it. So, we have 5% of the population we, of, in the world, we have 46% of the civilian ownership of guns in the world. And, you know, twen- and a University of Chicago Harris School of Public Policy, 21% of the nation's population have experienced firsthand gun violence or a family member. And in the black and Hispanic Americans, and black and Hispanic Americans, that, that rate is 54%. We average, we are now averaging for this year more than one mass killing a week. And I want to just say the ages of this last mass shooting at Tex- at the Allen, Texas Mall, 37, 35, 11, 8, 3, 20, 32, and 26. So, I just, anyway, all right. Proclamations. It is Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, and this proclamation we're going to read and share. And it is where as Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders is observed, I don't know if that's what it is worded a little, whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders Month is observed every May, and this year's theme is paying tribute to the generations of Asians and Pacific Islanders who have enriched America's history and are instrumental in its future success. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have shaped the history of the United States and their lives have dramatically influenced American society due to their rich heritage, the actions of more than 20 million Asian American and Pacific Islanders in the United States make America more vibrant, more prosperous, and more secure. And whereas our nation is particularly grateful to the many Asian American and Pacific Islanders who have served and are serving in our armed forces, protecting the nation and promoting freedom and peace worldwide, Asian Pacific Americans made lasting contributions to Americans' wartime efforts, collected stories, highlighted their service in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and Iraq. And whereas every May during Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month throughout the year, we invite our town to be in solidarity, to commemorate the accomplishments of AAPIs, celebrate the richness of the Asian American Pacific Islander communities, and whereas we share our support for all the families and communities impacted by systemic racism and violence, we will not sit silent when injustices occur, and it is upon us to stop AAPI hate and all racism and all hate. I call upon our residents to learn more about the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and therefore, be proclaimed on behalf of the Town Council of West Hartford and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sheri G. Cantor, to hereby proclaim the month of May National Asian Pacific Heritage Month in West Hartford. And then, we will go to public forum. I doubt there's anybody signed up, though. There's nobody signed up. Is there anyone that would like to speak to something on the agenda that's not the subject of a public hearing, which we didn't have, so that wouldn't be... All right. We will go to number four, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that items 5A through 5D, 7E through 7G, 10A and 10B be placed on the consent calendar.
Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the items are placed on consent. Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, we are on seven. Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we receive the ordinance and refer to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission ordinance amending multifamily residential parking requirements from the Capitol Regional Council of Governments for their required review and set for a public hearing on June 13, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Motion, is there any objection? Sorry. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. B, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we refer the ordinance amending certain requirements for accessory dwelling units, refer to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission to the Capitol Regional Council of Governments for their required review and set for a public hearing on June 13th, on 20, June 13, 2023, at 7:10 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Is there any objection? There being no objection, the motion is adopted. C, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we receive the ordinance amending the application approval procedures for special use permits and refer to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Capitol Regional Council for Governments, for their required view and set for a public hearing on June 13, 2023, at 7:20 PM.
Is there any objection? There being no objection, the motion is adopted. And I just will refer, those three are to align with state changes, but you'll, you'll hear more about them, and they're obviously scheduled fairly tightly. So, now we go to D, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to adopt the resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan Act grant funds.
Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Ledwin, now to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution is actually an amendment to a previous resolution where we were utilizing $150,000 of ARPA funds to hire a consultant to assist with a townwide crash study as well as an update to our bicycle facilities plan. Around the same time that we were going out to bid for this process, the council adopted a Vision Zero resolution back in January. So, we had modified the scope of the project to include the consultant working with the town and the Vision Zero Task Force that was created to develop and implement a Vision Zero action plan. And the additional cost to the town for these responsibilities would be an additional $150,000, which you would be approving tonight. Now, through the RFP process, we have selected a consultant, FHI Tool, to assist the town and the task force with Vision Zero. They have joined us informally for the last two Vision Zero meetings, and will join formally at this meet, this month's meeting later this month. With the addition of the Vision Zero Initiative, the scope of responsibilities now include a community engagement process that will include outreach to the entire town as well as to public information meetings. An online crash dashboard along with an interactive townwide map, similar to the one that we utilized for the Center Infrastructure Master Plan, will also be created by the consultant. We'll also undergo a road safety audit, which will engage residents and community members along certain corridors in town. And finally, they will assist in the production of the actual action plan, which will be the council and staff's roadmap to getting to zero deaths and zero serious injuries in 10 years. That summarizes this resolution. Through you, Madam Mayor, turn it over to council for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwin. And we did discuss this in committee. Are there any comments, or Mr. Sweeney?
I was just going to add that we discussed this in the finance committee meeting, and I think one of the things that we talked about was, along with this appropriation, we are hoping to have actionable items in the coming months, as I think we're hoping the summer, to, to really, there are some real actionable items that I think the community has kind of been asking for, for a while, and I think this provides us kind of the roadmap to do that. And Mr. Ledwin, that answered then in the committee meeting that that is what the intent is. So, you know, if you want to expand on that, you can, but I just wanted to lay that out.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you, Madam Mayor. We have, so we have been working with the Vision Zero Task Force. We have four different subcommittees that have been created during those first three meetings, three, yeah, first three meetings, February, March, and April. We have asked the task force members to identify what we're terming as low-hanging fruit, so projects, to the deputy mayor's point, that we could undertake during this first year while the action plan has been, is being created. So, our task force has identified a list of 28 such items, and we have a meeting coming up on May 22, where we will start to parse through those low-hanging fruit items and look to incorporate a number of projects during the course of this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwin. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay. With that, we will go to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we will go to, this is just flying through, mm-hmm. Yes, now we go back to Mr. Ledwin, the Town Manager Report. This is a very short agenda, we're, but we do have an executive session.
We do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin the Town Manager's Report with a summary of upcoming council business and meetings. This Thursday, May 11, at 6:00 PM, we have a Public Works Facilities and Sustainability Committee meeting. That will be a virtual meeting. On Monday, May 15, at 6:00 PM, we have a Human and Community Services Committee meeting that will also be virtual. And our next Town Council meeting is Tuesday, May 23, at 7:30 PM here in the council chambers. Have a couple of updates on things that are happening around town. Our host, we have a Host Community Reception Center drill on May 13. That's this Saturday. The West Hartford Fire Department and Office of Emergency Management will conduct the largest full-scale disaster drill in our town's history. Please be advised that the parking lots at Conner High School will not be accessible during the drill hours of 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There will be a heavy presence of fire and police department personnel in the area, and this is all part of the exercise. The scenario for the drill is to activate the town's emergency shelter at Conner High School and be ready to receive and process residents of Montville and Waterford who were asked to evacuate due to an incident at the Millstone Nuclear Power Plant. West Hartford's role is to scan evacuees and their vehicles for hazardous particles, and then provide assistance, counseling, and placement services if needed. FEMA will be evaluating West Hartford's readiness to serve as a Host Community Reception Center during this drill. This exercise follows a practice drill held April 14, which allowed West Hartford to receive feedback in areas needing improvement. The May 13 exercise involves about 150 staff, volunteers, and role players from seven town departments and eight outside agencies, including State Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, American Red Cross, Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, FEMA, and Dominion Energy. For more information on these exercises, please email the Office of Emergency Management at OEM@westharfordct.gov. Some news on expanded outdoor dining. The Community Development Department and Economic Development Division prepared a layout for the 2023 expanded outdoor dining season, and the Department of Public Works deployed the concrete barriers into the roadway yesterday, May 8, which marks the start of the expanded outdoor dining season. This will be the last year the barriers will be in the roadway as the town plans to implement its new master infrastructure plan that widens the sidewalk for more outdoor dining. That'll be on LaSalle, LaSalle Road next year, and Farmington Avenue the following year. On Saturday, September 20, 20, the public is invited to come out and watch 13 artists transform the barriers into beautiful murals on Memorial Road and Blueback Square and LaSalle Road and Farmington Avenue in West Hartford Center. The pride flag on Isham Road will be repainted as well. Roads will be closed from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Artists were chosen by the West Hartford Art League. First round of paving resurfacing begins the week of May 15. The roads tentatively, tentatively scheduled for repaving include Boulevard, Mountain Road to Riggs Avenue, Garfield Road, Clifton Avenue, and Troutbrook Drive, Asylum Avenue to Albany Avenue. We anticipate about four to five days of milling and about two weeks to complete the paving. Boulevard and Troutbrook Drive will require detours and/or road closures. Both police officers and flaggers will help with traffic control. Motorists are reminded to use caution while traveling on the milled surface and be alert for raised manhole structures. In accordance with the town's complete streets policy, bike lanes are planned for Boulevard following the resurfacing work. Additional roads will be repaved in July and September. Road reconstruction also begins this month. These projects are more complicated than repaven and therefore take longer to complete, typically about one to two months. The work generally includes a replacement of existing curb with granite curb, the replacement of existing driveway aprons with concrete aprons, selective sidewalk and drainage structure replacement, reestablishment of the roadway base material, and paving. The roads that are tentatively scheduled to be reconstructed this season are in order: Maryland Avenue, Len Court, Ardmore Road, Avalon Road, Vincent Street, and Brattle Street. Reconstruction projects span from May to October of each year. The Department of Public Works will hold its annual open house on Saturday, May 20, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at its facility on Brixton Street, in observance of National Public Works. At the event, children can sit in big trucks, while adults can get all their recycling questions answered and learn more about electric vehicles and charging stations. Attendees can enter a free drawing for a yard waste barrel along with a free bulky or metal waste removal permit. Attendees are encouraged to bring nonperishable food items for the West Hartford Food Pantry to help a neighbor in need. West Hartford DPW is joining 34 other communities in Connecticut to fill a Public Works truck with food and household goods in support of local community food banks. This year, the annual papers shredding event for West Hartford residents will be on a separate date, Saturday, June 10, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM nearby on the Oakwood Extension. Confidential papers can be disposed of properly and safely. This event is for residents only, no businesses. Nonperishable food will also be collected at this event. Also want to congratulate our 17 new CERT members. West Hartford's Community Emergency Response Team just completed training for 17 new members on Tuesday, May 2, 2013. This is the fifth training class since West Hartford CERT was reconstituted in March of 2021. The team now has trained 177 members. The 24-hour basic CERT training includes disaster medical operations, disaster preparedness, fire safety, light search and rescue, and actor, active shooter training. The course is a mix of classroom and hands-on training. The next CERT training class will be held in the fall. And also, finally, the Community Job and Resource Fair will take place on May 23. The Town of West Hartford and the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce will hold its third annual Community Job and Resource Fair on Tuesday, May 23, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Elmwood Community Center. The job fair has attracted an impressive, impressive list of employers from a variety of industries. There's still time to register, and there's no fee to participate. To register, please email jobfair@westharfordct.gov. No registration is required of job seekers. Anyone requiring auxiliary aid or service for effective communication or modification of policies or procedures to participate in this event should contact Suzanne Osslander, our ADA coordinator, at SuzanneO@westharfordct.gov, or 860-561-7580. Preferably seven days in advance of this event would be welcomed. So, thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I'd have to answer any questions after council.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwin. Are there questions for the Town Manager? No? Okay. Corporation Counsel, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no formal report. However, as indicated on your agenda, we will, we will require an executive session to discuss pending claims and litigation. Madam Mayor, for the members of the press who are in the audience, I do expect that we will likely be taking action when we return from the executive session. And with that, I'd be to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Other questions for Corporation Counsel? Okay, seeing none. We go to announcements. First, I just want to say that, next to the Town Manager and I, along with the Social Services staff, were at a Volunteers in Bloom in West Hartford event, a thank you to volunteers for social services. And talking to many of the volunteers, there were a lot of people that actually didn't, weren't at the breakfast because they were busy doing other things, but they are, we have a lot of people that come week after week after week, you know, donating four hours, six hours. We, there are 100 volunteers to assist in the food pantry, and it's just a really important reminder of the, how critical it is that people step in and do this work, and how wonderful our community is that people are committing to doing such wonderful giving work, and how they, the volunteers also are, have a sense of camaraderie and a sense of really being connected to the community and giving back, and how important all of that is. So, I just want to recognize that. I also want to thank WHCI. We had a, thank you, Mr. Davidoff, for organizing, helping to organize the goodbye party for Essie for her years of dedication and service to our town. And she had wanted to do this to benefit WHCI. And as the Town Manager was talking about our schedule and the remote meetings that we do, the, the interactive meeting, that, you know, it's very easy for people to, to tune in and find out what happened at a committee meeting in a way that really didn't happen before. If you missed a in-person committee meeting in the, we call it the fishbowl over here, you would miss what, what was covered. And so, it's really a nice way of, of the public being informed with accurate, timely information. So, WHCI does an incredible service, the work they do, so much happens behind the scenes, and we are so grateful. And again, that fundraiser, I'm sure donations are still being accepted in Essie's honor. It would mean the world to her and to all of us if anybody out there feels that they would like to donate. And tomorrow is a busy day. We start with 26th Annual Senior Day. I will be, Senator Slapp and I will both be at the West, and the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District are hosting 26th Annual Senior Day, 9:30 to 12:30 at Bishop's Corner Senior Center. 50 vendors and staff from the Fire Department, Police Department, Social Services, CERT, and Health District will all be on hand to offer free health screenings, education, and information. The event includes chair massages, hearing, vision, blood pressure, pulse, oxygen saturation, dental, mental, dental health, mental health, blood sugar screenings, and CERT will give a hands-only CPR demonstration. And again, Senator Slapp will be there, I will be there for a little bit. Light continental breakfast will be served for attendees, and all seniors are welcome to attend. The event is free. I think a few of us qualify. Later in the afternoon, WEHA Health and Wellness will be taking place on Isham Road and Webster Walk in Blueback Square. Attendees have an opportunity to meet a variety of health and wellness-related businesses, nonprofits, and vendors. This is a partnership between West Hartford Chamber of Commerce and Blueback Square, and I remember last year, it was so windy, but there were wonderful, wonderful vendors there and offering, there were really wonderful snacks, and it was great talking to them. Encore, May 13. This is the Playhouse Theater Group Annual Fundraiser at the Society Room in Hartford, 6:00 PM to midnight. Evening includes dinners, dinner, drinks, live silent auction, dancing with the Tanya Farrell Band, amazing, live performances paying tribute to the work of John Kander. For more information or to purchase tickets, call the box office or go to playhouseonpark.org. Cybersecurity at Home Insight from Tech-Savvy Parents will be offered on May 16. This is a virtual program for middle school students and caregivers from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. So, really, and also really important parenting tools for, for that. There are, kids are way ahead of us. Pet Parade will take place May 20 at 10:00 AM, and this is sponsored by Alyssa Caliendo, Branch Manager of Bay Equity Home Loans, is coordinating this parade to benefit Dog Star Rescue in Bloomfield. Registration is a $25 donation. Check-in begins at 8:30 AM, and the parade kicks off at 9:30 at the corner of LaSalle Arapaho. Prizes are awarded to best in show, best dressed, best hair, best group costume. Red carpet photos of your pet will be taken by Sonia Zinke, and children can get their face painted, too. For more information and to register, go to bayequityhome loans dot com, and then West Hartford Pet Parade. And the pet parade will also be held during the painting of the outdoor barriers, so that's exciting and will be fun to watch. Are there any other? I just actually want to add one more thing. The summer is approaching, and it's a really important time for the food pantry to stock up on food because it is actually the most needed during vacations and, and summer time. So, if you're, when you're going to the store, you can put a little pile and then bring over food items, protein items, and, you know, pasta, cereals are really, really helpful. But also, if you see hygiene items or, or baby supplies also are appreciated and needed, so. All right. Anything else for announcements? All right. Then we will, Mr. Sweeney, you are on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation Gabriella Farrell, PPA, Cherie Shields Farrell, and Brian Farrell versus West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education in Town, Town of West Hartford. I invite the Town Manager, Corporation Counsel, Deputy Corporation Counsel, and Attorney I invite the town manager, Corporation Council, Deputy Corporation Council, and Attorney Gerard to join us.
Is there any objection? Okay, there being no objection, the motion is adopted, and we will be exiting for executive session. See you in a bit.